Madam Chair, whenever you're ready, I'm ready.
Good morning. I would like to call to order the meeting of August 19th, 2025 for the Napa County Board of Supervisors. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. May I have roll call, please?
Supervisor Ramos?
Here.
Supervisor Lassio?
Present.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Here.
Chair Ann Cottrell is absent today, and Acting Chair Supervisor Manfree.
Here. All right. Brian Bordana, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first item is Item Three, the Pet of the Week. So Luis and Ms. Piggy are here from the county animal shelter, and I would love to meet Ms. Piggy.
Miss Piggy!
Okay, Luis, this is such a delight. What can you tell us about Ms. Piggy?
So this is Ms. Piggy. She is a one-year-old guinea pig. She's been at the shelter for a few weeks now, still available for adoption. She came to us as a stray guinea pig, which I could really not tell you how that happens. Every time it happens, I always question, like, how did you find a stray guinea pig? Anyway, we'll just take it in. But she is such a sweetheart. She's been at the shelter those few weeks, and she's basically one of the most handable guinea pigs that I've experienced at the shelter. Picking her up, you can kind of tell she's been in a home before. She's very social, outgoing. There's moments where you're petting her, and she's just sitting there, and you think, okay, is this a stuffed animal? Or is she just that content with being petted? Guinea pigs are really social animals. She can get adopted alone, but in case you guys do have another guinea pig companions, they will go a long way for them.
Okay, so here we have Ms. Piggy, who was found as a stray guinea pig. Ms. Piggy has stories.
She does.
Oh, and I would say, being close to her, she's very beautiful, and she has really inquisitive eyes. And so take a close look at Ms. Piggy, and I hope we can find her a home this week. So adoption fees are waived for the week for this animal. Thank you, Luis. Okay. Next, we have, let's see, we don't have any proclamations today for Item Four, but our clerk would like to make a quick announcement. Clerk Hoskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, our public comment line is not working, so that means you won't be able to call in. So our alternative options is you can email the board and the clerk at publiccomment@countyofnapa.org, or you can leave a message on our public comment line, a voice message. That still works, at 707-299-1776, and we can forward your voice message after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hope that's clear for everyone. So moving on to Item Five, the Consent Calendar, and Item Five-R will be pulled today and brought back under Item Eight. Are there any board comments or items to pull off the consent calendar for any other items, 5A through 5AD?
Did you want to take a public comment?
Oh, that's listed first here. But yeah, I would also be interested to know if there's any public comment for Items 5A through 5AD, with the exception of Item 5R. Okay, so no phones today, and no one in the room, and no comments from the board. So may I have a motion and a second to approve calendar items 5A through 5AD, excepting 5R?
Second.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. So our next item is Item Six, Public Comment. We will now take public comment for anyone wishing to comment on items not on the agenda today. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Chris Malin, speaking to you as a resident of Napa County. I'm very active in the climate action planning and the groundwater planning, for groundwater sustainable planning. And I just wanted to take a moment to reflect publicly on what's going on in the world with climate. It isn't just about thinking about what we're doing here locally. We can always do more locally to bring down our carbon emissions. And I think we have to go and think beyond what our current planning is, because we're living in devastating climate times. Right now, people are dying in Pakistan because the Himalayas are collapsing from monsoon rains. There are areas where glaciers are collapsing and wiping out entire villages. The death toll today is 400 people, and they're still ravaging, being ravaged by massive boulders coming out of the Himalayas and raging through their villages like they've never seen before. A few weeks ago, my home country, Switzerland, lost a village because a glacier collapsed and wiped out the entire village. Luckily, they were warned. They could see that the glacier was eminently going to give away, and it did, and it was devastating. Currently, hurricane, there's a hurricane off the coast of the United States on the east, and they're preparing, while they may not have a direct hit, they are preparing for storm surge and massive flooding along the eastern coast. Europe is going through a massive heat wave, and there are areas of islands off Illy where there's massive fires going on. There are terrible fires going on in Europe, and we need to do more. Napa County does not have one nature-based solution to climate change, yet it is called for by the scientists of the world that we cannot meet our carbon reduction requirements by just reducing fossil fuels. We have to come up with nature-based solutions in order to get ahead of the climate disaster curve. And I just encourage you to find those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Malin. Okay, so we are on to board announcements. Item Seven, would any board members like to make announcements at this time? I see Supervisor Gallagher. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Just a couple of things. Wanted to mention that I participated in a peace vigil last week in Fuller Park. It was organized by community members, but also several different faith leaders. It was really interesting to see a lot of different faith leaders come together, and it was really just a call for a prayer for peace among people of different faiths and cultures. And so it was very powerful, and there will be more of these kinds of events, and I encourage people to get out and participate if they are able. Also, wanted to say that the Napa City Council today at their 3:30 session will hear about the Riverline project. I'm part of the Riverline Board, and it is an incredible project that is not yet funded, but it will take probably the entire community to see this one through. It will be a phased project, so things aren't going to happen real quickly, but basically, we will see the draft plan today at City Council. The Riverline is going to be a trail that takes advantage of the flood control project's river trail and creates amenities that encourage people to come down to the river for both recreation and education. So please come learn more. Also, on Thursday, the Second Annual Opioid Awareness Rally and Memorial will take place at, that's Memorial Park, at 5:30. So please, if you can, join us for that also. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Lassio?
Thank you. Just want to thank our sheriff's and our Callan County Fire for coming out with a great show at National Night Out. It was really fantastic. It was well-engaged. A lot of people were there, a lot of kids were there. And I really feel like it's one way for us to continue to build those relationships and that trust with the community, with the public, and maybe even inspire some kids to be future firefighters, law enforcement, and first responders. So want to thank everybody for that. That was a great showing. Also, I attended the Enchanted Hills 75th anniversary. It was really, really special. The last time I'd been up there, their rebuild after the 2017 fire is really incredible. It's absolutely beautiful. And they've taken the vision of the founder, Rose, and taken it to the next level. So not only is it a retreat and education and summer program for those who are visually impaired, blind, or visually impaired and deaf, but it's also available to other people for retreats, because they have kind of an economic development side to help sustain that property. They work very closely with our fire department in terms of fuel management. I mean, they really are. If you want to know how to do it, go to Enchanted Hills. And if you want to have a retreat or a business gathering, go there, support them. I spoke, which I'm honored to do that. It was wonderful. But I didn't have a recognition or a resolution or anything for them. I felt a little bad, the state and the federal did. They had these beautiful resolutions, and I'm wondering if we can kind of make up for that, and we could have staff to put something together and for us all to sign after the fact. I think that would be nice. Also, just want to say, you know, I'm on the Behavioral Health Board. I enjoy my experience on there and what I get to learn. It's a community-based board. Really good to see our behavioral health department shine in their expertise. This last week, it was a nonprofit all about patients' rights and what they're doing to let patients know what their rights are in all settings and behavioral health settings. I was very impressed with their program. It's fairly new. All the 58 counties, I think there are 22 counties, and part of that is there's just a lack of, but we're really fortunate. The man that leads this was, used to be on the State Board for Patient Rights, and prior to that, he worked in the state hospital system. So he's brought a lot of knowledge. I attended the Salvation Army Out of the Fire Annual Event that raises money for their culinary program for folks who are formerly homeless or have been incarcerated, struggled with addiction. It's always inspiring. And so congratulations to Salvation Army in terms of the money that they were able to raise and their ongoing program. That also includes housing. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. I have a couple of updates here. One is that, of course, National Night Out was a huge success for the community. Wonderful turnout and really good show from all of our many agencies who were there recruiting and just putting out the good word and helping people enjoy their community and have fun. We also had the county fair since our last meeting, yes. It was lovely, and meeting. Yes. It was, it was lovely, and many of our community members enjoyed it. That was evident while I was there. I especially enjoyed the 4H exhibits. Fantastic. And on behalf of Ann Cottrell, who is not here today, I would just like to recap that she held a town hall at Berriessa Highlands in partnership with the Sheriff's Department. And that was very well-attended by that remote community. And just a lovely event, educational, informative. There were a lot of kids out playing, and food provided. And it was, it was just really lovely. I attended, and it was so, so overjoyed to be there with everyone. So it was, it was a really good one. We also, in the week ahead, have an unveiling for a mosaic of, made by a local artist, Christina Young, with items that were broken in the 2014 quake. So this is an enormous mosaic on an entire boxcar, which will be placed in the Rail Arts District off of Action Avenue on Sunday, August 24. The celebration is from 1:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. I encourage everyone to attend. This is really the culmination of many years of persistence and hard work. And, you know, the process, to my knowledge, was slowed down by the many disasters that intervened. But in a lot of ways, this is, this was our, this was our first big disaster of many that rolled out over the past decade plus. And, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to marking the occasion this Sunday. So unless there, if that's all for updates.
Supervisor.
Yeah. Oh.
May I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to go back. Supervisor Alessio had made a comment about a resolution, a combination, something with-
Correct, for the 75th anniversary.
With everybody's signature.
Yes.
And so I just want to, is that a referral to our staff to bring something back?
Yes.
We'll put it on the agenda, and it'll get all your signatures.
Thank you.
Just wanted to confirm.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. I think that's a wonderful referral. Okay, so we are moving on to item nine, public, oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Item eight, discussion of items pulled from the consent calendars. We had item 5R pulled. So is there any public comment on item 5R? I see no one in the room, and the phones are not with us today. So we'll move on to the discussion of item 5R. This item is authorization to maintain existing rates that were previously made effective October 1st, 2024, for the residential and commercial operation costs associated with the collection of solid waste, recyclables, green waste, and food waste applicable to the unincorporated area of Garbage Zone 1, a service which is provided by Napa County Recycling and Waste Services LLC. So this is garbage pickup for areas outside of cities and south of the border with the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency in Napa County. Good morning, Mr. Leder.
Good morning. I'm happy to give an overview or, or just ask questions, whatever the, answer questions, whatever the preference of the board is.
Sure. I, I think it would be helpful to start with just an overview of the stage we're at. And I expect this to be a fairly short discussion, but, but we will have a little bit of discussion, I think.
Very good. So the county is in a franchise arrangement with Napa County Recycling and Waste Service to pick up the garbage, if you will, which includes recycling and composting in the Zone 1 area, which, as the Chair mentioned, is essentially in the unincorporated area south of Yountville. The contract was signed, actually originally in 2005. It was revised, updated, and extended in 2018 and expires in 2032. Board may remember that last year, we had a significant increase in rates, due to essentially the collapse in the recycling markets last year, which greatly reduced the revenue that was received for our recycling. As we come into this year, those recycling markets have largely recovered. Those markets are very volatile. They go up and down. But this was, this was a better year. So we're in a position where we do not need to raise rates this year. In fact, there's a little, little extra revenue which will stay in what you would call a balancing account and will be used to offset any needed increase in, in next year. So that's pretty much where we are. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So is there anyone on the board who would like to start the discussion? Okay, I will. Okay. So, so I just, I pulled this one because it's fairly complex. And as a newer board member, I just felt like I didn't have all that much background to be making a decision about it. It's, now I, now I understand it's the second or third amendment that we've made to the contract, which was initially from 2005. So this is a pretty longstanding agreement with this company. And, and I did notice that some of the rate structures seemed to create incentives to maybe not have a smaller trash bin and not create a smaller waste stream for individuals. And, and I'm, I, I just think that's a little bit out of keeping with where we're intending to head as a community. So, you know, that was my first, you know, the first thing I noticed where I was like, oh, maybe we need to talk about this a little more. I need to understand it a little bit better to be sure I'm making a good decision. Yeah. So I, I'd just like to know more about the reasons for the rate increases and the justification for the rate structures. If it's based on the cost of service, that's fine. But I haven't seen anything supporting it myself yet. So I just would like to learn more. And, and then also, if there are any possibilities for structuring a financial buffer into this, like I, you know, what you, what I understand is that there was an excess in the revenue in the past year. And so if there's a way to set up some kind of reserve fund or some kind of mechanism to buffer against future changes, because, you know, the markets for recycling may go up and down. But that's, you know, having, having ratepayers set their rates following fluctuations in the market isn't necessarily the best for them to, to organize their own finances. So anything we can do to kind of stabilize that, I think, would be helpful. Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. I, I sit in this unique position here of, I think, being the only one that has far more experience on this garbage contract and, and waste and recycled materials contract. And I think it would be very helpful, in light of the changes that happened last year, and also having context. So I, I will say, I am prepared for this to move forward today. But I think it would be helpful that we bring back a greater study session item that can update all of us on, first, the impacts of Clover Flat closing down in Up Valley, and also in the implement, the implications of carb regulations and, and state law that has required taking elective services into compulsory services, such as composting and recycling, that weren't necessarily part of the original landscape, but now have become. And for us to understand what that ability is, and I, I do believe it's perfect timing tied to our regional climate action plan, and for us to be able to understand where we're going on our regional climate action plan and what incentives we can create through some sort of a fund within this, this service to be able to further the regional climate action plan. So I, I would actually recommend to my colleagues that we move forward with this today as it is justified. And I, as one having been here a while, these are very incremental increases that are supported by, by the market. But I do think for the benefit of all, you know, two of us are on that, the disposal board on the south, two of us on, on the north, not all five of us know the ins and outs of what's happening, yet it does affect the county as a whole. There is an economic impact. There is a public health impact. So I think that we also need to really engage with Dr. Wu and public health and understanding what more we can do to ensure that these contracts are working for the advancement of our climate action goals.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Supervisor Ramos. I, I also support doing some kind of study session or in-depth, you know, look at the way the contracts are arranged and how they connect to the Upper Valley Waste Management and other waste services in the community. I mean, I know that we're also contracting with the city of Napa to use their recycling center here, and that's another connection between communities. And aligning this with our climate action goals seems like a very natural thing to do. Waste streams are a really big part of methane emissions and other, other problems related to climate success. And I think it's a very good idea, Supervisor Ramos, to engage with public health about this because, again, there's a lot of connections there. So, so I think this is a referral for a study session on this topic at some future date. And, and I also, I don't have any, any, I have no reservations about approving this today, but I just wanted to have a little bit more of a discussion. So, yeah. Are there, are there any public comments on this item?
I was just going to make a quick comment.
Sorry, I didn't.
And just that, that, you know, there's SB 1383 that we are mandated by, and that's for all waste, you know, diversion areas. And so that's true with, with all of them. I do think it's a good information. I don't know how much, I feel like there's, there's a plan. We just don't know what the plan is for those yet. And I totally agree in terms of the regional climate action plan. That is something that, you know, is moving forward. We're excited about that, the opportunities, what we can do. I will tell you that our local Napa Recycling Waste, they are nationally recognized for the work that they do. So we're very fortunate that we have them available. And I don't know, again, Mr. Leder, I don't know if there's involvement with Napa Recycling Waste as we move forward in these other unincorporated waste facilities. But they are mandated too by SB 1383, correct?
Yes, I mean, very much so. As Supervisor Ramos was alluding to, if you go back 10 or 15 years, a lot of the innovative programs that this county led with were voluntary. And at some point, you know, those voluntary programs, of course, cost money, and they, they drove rates. And if at any time the board decided that that was too much money, the board could say, well, don't do that program. We don't want to spend the money. Unfortunately, now, most of those programs are simply mandated. So you don't, you don't really have the flexibility that you used to. A good deal of, I won't say a good deal, but a decent part of the rate that Napa County Recycling and Waste Services pay, has to charge our ratepayers is because we then take our garbage to the Devlin Road Transfer Station, for instance, which is a separate agency, and they charge a fee. We also take our green waste and mixed recycling and other recycling to the city's materials diversion facility, also, you know, right down near the, the transfer station. And to Supervisor Ramos' point, how all these things fit together happens to be, but pretty complicated. But the city is working with Napa Recycling and Waste Services, the other company-
Yes.
-to do a lot of the things that, that 1383 is required, is requiring. So, for instance, they're building a, a new construction and demolition debris processing facility. They're doing additional composting, and the facility is all associated with that. So that, that drives the cost of what our company has to pay in order to get rid of the garbage. So these all are intertwined. And a great deal, or a good deal of what we're paying now are to provide these mandatory services, which frankly, the community wants. I mean, I don't think there's any objection to doing composting or any objection to doing recycling, or any objection to having a, a good construction and demolition debris facility. But they do cost money as well, so.
Correct, along with the biomass gasification and the anaerobic digestion, which I, I know those have been goals for the city of Napa and also for their, their partner here.
Correct.
So, okay. Yeah, so I think, I mean, I, I support the discussion and the presentation, not only just for us, but maybe for the public good and understanding. So thank you. Thank you for coming up and sharing your information.
You bet.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that Supervisor Manfree and I were at the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority yesterday. I was sitting in for Supervisor Cottrell. But it's clear that the staff has a lot of information on the plan and the implementation, especially around 1383. And they did mention that all jurisdictions will be reviewed by the end of 2027. So obviously, these implementations are taking place. And I agree that it would be great to have sort of a, you know, an overall understanding of how all of these different agencies work together and maybe sort of diagram out how it's, how it all flows because it, it is complicated. And there are, there's a lot of collaboration between agencies and, you know, a lot happening within each of those different agencies and how, you know, there are special contracts sometimes that go outside our area to take care of waste streams that we can no longer take care of. And there are obviously implications with Clover Flat closing down. So I think it would be really, really helpful for us to get a big overview and understand the system itself, but then also how the rates work in conjunction with the services. So I'm all in favor of that. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve 5, or is it 5R?
Yes.
Yes, 5R.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion to approve item 5R by Supervisor, oh, we didn't take public comment properly.
You did.
Okay, that was close enough. Okay. So motion to approve item 5R by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Alessio. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that one passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leder, for, for your, for your, for the information today. That was really helpful. Okay, so moving on to item nine, public hearings. Item 9A, introduction and intention to adopt an ordinance amending Napa County's contract with the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, or CALPERS, for unrepresented employees. So I'd like to open the public hearing on this item and invite a staff report. Yes, Ms. Prisciano, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Christine Prisciano, the Chief Human Resources Officer. And with me today, I have Olivia Soria, who's our benefit administrator. This item introduces a resolution of intention to amend the contract with the CALPERS, which is required by Government Code 20516, when an employer intends to change the amount of cost sharing agreed to between employees and an employer. These changes are normally agreed to between a represented bargaining group and an agency and presented on, on the consent agenda. However, in this case, the cost-sharing rate is changing between the unrepresented, unrepresented management, safety management, and confidential employees. This change aligns with the county's management compensation plan, which guarantees these employees the same terms and conditions of those of the Napa Association of Public Employees Services supervisory unit. This board previously affirmed a 0.410% rate reduction in the cost-sharing rate totaling 1.936%. Because these employees are unrepresented, CALPERS requires the administrative public hearing to introduce an intention to adopt an ordinance amending Napa's contract with CALPERS for the unrepresented employees. Subsequently to this hearing, a vote of the employees will be held to obtain a simple majority approval. Once the vote is held, we will return with that documentation and a recommendation to adopt the ordinance at a future Board of Supervisors' agenda. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from, from the board on this item? Are there any public comments from anyone here today on this item? I'm seeing none. So I'll, oh, I'm sorry, I did board questions too early. But I'll close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the board for any discussion, which I still see no discussion. So I would ask for a motion to, for the intent to adopt the ordinance amending the contract with CALPERS.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? No. So motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Ramos. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is item 9B, which is adopting a resolution amending in-home supportive services public authority conflict of interest code. So I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. And welcome Doug Parker, Deputy County Counsel, for a staff report.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and esteemed members of the board. I am here on behalf of the in-home supportive services department to bring forth an amendment to the conflict of interest code. Originally, it was established in 2002, and we had a modification as recently as 2023. However, after the county revised their conflict of interest code, we had decided to make one that would align with that code. And also, of importance, is to change the designated filing designated filing officer to the Elections Division, also consistent with the county's position. So it's relatively straightforward. Those are the major two changes. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Oh, my mic is off now. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any discussion.
I do have a question.
Okay. Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know our conflict of interest may be this fair, Councilwoman Parker, Ms. Bratton, our conflict of interest policy requires us to revise it every two years. Do we have a similar requirement with the authority, or is it just good practice?
I don't know if Mr. Parker knows the answer to that question, but that's actually a question I was asking a deputy in my office last week. And I don't have the answer for you today, but I will get it to the board.
Okay. I definitely would appreciate that. I know we did find ourselves in a, in a situation a few years past where our conflict of interest policy had not been timely filed, or not just, not filed, not updated. So I think it would be helpful to understand which ones are statutorily obligated for updates. And then for us, maybe it's appropriate within our county policies that we establish a good practice of adoption of conflict of interest, sorry, review of conflict of interest policies. I'm assuming we have all the right ones adopted, but suggesting review and to see what that measure is. But I think that that would be good information for the board to have.
I will certainly look into that.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? No?
With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Thank you. Okay, so motion by Supervisor Ramos, and second by Supervisor Gallagher to adopt a resolution amending in-home supportive services public authority conflict of interest code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Item 9C, we will now discuss adopting a resolution to abandon an approximately two and a half mile portion of Old Hal Mountain Road while retaining a right-of-way for a public, for a public trail? What? Oh, this one's?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, I did not realize, but yes, staff requested continuance for this item, which is the abandonment of Old Hal Mountain Road. Mr. Letter, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in deference to Supervisor Cottrell, who couldn't be here today, this is her district, and she's been intimately involved in this since the very beginning. So we're just requesting a continuance to a meeting where she will be here.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the continuance, not on the item? No? Then I would, I would look for a motion to continue the item to September 23, 2025 at 9:00 AM.
Still moved.
Okay. First by Ramos, and a second by Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will continue the item. Thank you. All right. Item 9D, convening a community forum pursuant to the State Transparent Review of Unjust Transfers and Holds Act, or the TRUTH Act, which calls for counties to hold annual public forums explaining how county law enforcement worked with immigration and customs enforcement representatives. So I'll open the public hearing on this time, and welcome a staff Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, members, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here to conduct the TRUTH Act Forum today. I'm AJ Alarcon. I'm the Assistant Director of Corrections.
I'm Deputy County Counsel Corey Utzirogi. I represent the Napa County Department of
So today, we have a Napa County forum for the TRUTH Act. I'll be doing the presentation. We have Assistant Chief Probation Officer Craig Birch and Sheriff Oscar Ortiz here today as well for their portions, although they're both negative. So what we'll talk about today in the community forum, we'll talk about the TRUTH Act. We'll talk about the action report that the Department of Corrections takes, along with the same for the probation department in conjunction with the sheriff's office. And then we'll have some questions in regards to that after the fact. So the TRUTH Act is Assembly Bill 200972, Chapter 768. It's AB 279, which, upon the attorney, local law enforcement agency's federal immigration policy, which gives ICE access. It's an act to add Chapter 7.17.2, commencing with Section 7283 to Division 7 of the Title I of the Government Code relating to local government. And it was approved by the governor on September 28 of 2016, and filed with the Secretary of State on September 20 of 2016. Beginning January 1 of 2018, the local governing body of any county, city, and county in which the local enforcement agency has provided federal immigration and custom enforcement ICE access to an individual during the last year shall be at least one community forum during the following year. That is to be open to the public in accessible location, and with at least 30 days' notice to provide information to the public about ICE access to individuals, and to receive and consider public comment, which is what we're doing today. The local law enforcement agency may provide the governing body with data it maintains regarding the number and demographic characteristic of individuals to whom the agency has provided ICE access to. The data ICE access was provided, and whether the ICE access was provided through a hold, transfer, or notification request, and through other means. Data may be provided in the form of statistics, or if statistics are not maintained, individual records that are provided, that personally identifiable information, which shall be redacted. And in continuation, so ICE access means for the purpose of civil immigration enforcement, including when an individual is stopped with or without their consent, arrested, detained, or otherwise under the control of the local law enforcement agency. All of the following comply. Responding to an ICE hold, notification, or transfer, providing notification to ICE in advance of the public that an individual is being or will be released at a certain date and time through data sharing and otherwise. Providing ICE non-publicly available information regarding release dates, home address, or work addresses, and whether through computer databases, jail logs, or otherwise. Allowing ICE to interview an individual and providing ICE information regarding the dates and times of probation or parole check-ins. And then we will go into our data here. So our policy that we follow is Policy 604, and it's cooperation with ICE that we follow at NCDC. And it states that NCDC shall comply with a valid detainer, DHS Form I 247A Notice of Action, federal warrants, or court orders. In regards to interpreters, NCDC staff are prohibited from using immigration authorities as interpreters. Responding to ICE requests, the detainers, under no circumstances shall an individual be detained past their eligible release date upon their immigration status. In regards to interviews, ICE officers are not allowed inside the jail to conduct interviews unless the individual has given their consent and signed the appropriate forms. Acknowledging they understand the interview is voluntary, and that they have been given, and that they have given consent, and a representative of their choosing has been notified. Following, responding to the ICE requests, continuing 604, cooperation with ICE, advance notice of a proposed lease, NCDC shall provide ICE with advance notice of an individual's anticipated release date and time if the individual has previously been convicted of a serious felony pursuant to 1192.7 PC, or a violent felony pursuant to 667.5 C PC, or the individual has been convicted within the last five years of a misdemeanor for a crime that is punishable as either a misdemeanor or a felony, or has been convicted within the last 15 years of a specified felony, or if the individual is currently charged with a serious felony or violent felony, and a magistrate has made a finding of probable cause as to that charge at the preliminary hearing. In responding to the ICE request, advance notice or proposed release continued, the individual has previously been convicted of an aggravated felony under federal law, or the individual is identified by ICE as the subject of an outstanding federal felony arrest warrant, or the individual is currently a registrant on the California Sex and Arson Registry. Notification of the ICE request, upon receipt of any of the ICE detainers, interview, or notification requests, NCDC shall provide a copy of the request to the individual and their chosen representative, and inform them whether the department intends to comply with that request. And these are some of the charges of examples for you guys to see here today. So violent and serious crimes, PC 667.5 and/or 1192.7, murder, attempted murder, criminal street gangs, carjackings, rape by means of force, duress, menace, or fear, or immediate injury, assault with deadly weapon on a peace officer, continuous sexual abuse of a child. And examples of past misdemeanors and felonies, entice minor into prostitution, advertising child pornography, felony, child neglect, first-degree burglary, DUIs with priors or bodily injury, and possess firearm while committing a felony, malicious discharge of a firearm from a vehicle, human trafficking, and felony hit-and-run involving injury. And for the examples of the federal charges, it's basically some of the same ones, murder, rape, illicit trafficking of controlled substances, domestic abuse by a habitual offender, sexual exploitation of children, sex trafficking of children by force, fraud, or coercion, and interstate transport of minors for prostitution. So we're going to talk about the data that NCDC has to report out for the year of 2024. So the amount of requests that the Department of Corrections received, we received 158 requests from ICE. We responded to 36 of those requests, okay, because 36 complied with the charges. So upon the release, we provided information of 36, and available information was 36. In regards to allowing the interviews, there were zero that were requested. There were zero that requested an attorney, and providing information about probation check-ins or parole check-ins was zero. So ICE, out of the 158, 36 complied. They took seven for the year of 2024. So in summary, NCDC does not respond to the ICE request until the inmate is eligible for release from the facility, or if they are pending transfer to another local or state facility. When criteria was met, NCDC responded to ICE requests 36 times. ICE took in custody seven from NCDC, and they did not take in 29, who had met that criteria. And this is just a chart of the access that, of all the people that complied are on here, whether they were interviewed, which they were all, nobody was requested. And out of that release to ICE, it shows that there were seven taken. This is a continuation. So out of the demographics of the people that they, that they took, they took six males and one female. The ages for the males were 26, 40, 31, 38, 31, and 44. And for the females, it was one female that they took, and she was 44 years old. So in total, that was seven. And out of that, they were Hispanic. And that concludes the presentation right now for NCDC. Right now, we have probation's data. They all have zeros. They did not comply with any of them.
They didn't receive any.
They didn't receive any, yeah. They didn't receive anything. And then in regards to the sheriff, the sheriff complies with Policy 413, and is equal enforcement of the law and equal services to the members of the public, increases the effectiveness of the office in protecting and serving the entire community, and recognizing the dignity of all persons regardless of their national origin or immigration status. Their deputies do not comply with, into individuals on their immigration status. Deputies shall not detain any individual for any length of time for a civil or criminal violation of federal immigration laws. In absent an urgent issue of officer's safety or other emergency circumstances, requests by federal immigration officials for assistance should be directed to a supervisor. Requested assistance would only occur consistent with the California Values Act, Government Code, Section 7284.2. The sheriff's, oh, yeah, there it is. The sheriff's department did not receive any requests either. There were at zero. So that concludes the presentation for 2024. If the board has any questions that they would like to ask.
Thank you, Director Alarcon, for this comprehensive and informative presentation, and Ms. Rogi for being here, too. Is there any public comment on this item today? Okay, I'm seeing none, so I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to the board for a discussion. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
No questions.
Oh, Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm just noticing, I was looking back at the report from 2022 and the report from 2023. We've obviously had an uptick in 2024. We had three individuals taken into custody in '22, and three in '23, and seven in '24. And I'm just wondering if you have any ideas about the uptick, and if it has more to do with crimes being committed, or it has more to do with federal policy?
I can't speak to an uptick, but what I can speak to is that there was an uptick in regards to how many people were taken in 2024. So the last two years, you are correct, we, ICE had taken in three out of that. In 2022, there was 107 requests that came in. In 2023, 84 requests came in. There was an uptick out of 155, but that's also due to the amount of charges that people are coming in for that qualify, and that we get noticed on. And so what I did do, though, is I did go look and just, I didn't do a comprehensive analysis, but I did look tentatively to what is 2025 looking like. And about mid-year, just a guesstimate from looking at it, they've, ICE has taken in about seven so far. So for the full year of 2024, they had only taken in seven. At the, approximately middle of June, July, it was right about seven at that time. So we still have about five to six months left, so it'll be interesting to see how much more that changes for the year of 2025 to report out.
Yeah, seems like we're going up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. I appreciate the report. Just a couple of things. One, for future presentations, I think it would be very helpful to have this as a timed item, so that there is an expectation of when we're going to do this. I know in the past, we've done it in the evenings as a timed item, so I think that that would be really helpful to be able to publicize this, as I know that there is interest about this item. I did have a question in regards to whether the individuals that were picked, that were detained by ICE, whether there were any warrants involved, whether judicial or criminal warrants, or whether it was just a pick-up-on-release.
From what I, what I looked at when we were doing it, there weren't any warrants, there weren't anything like that. It was just the charges that the individuals came in on, and that's what they were picked up for. But no federal warrants or anything that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we track that?
We don't track for the warrants, but what we can track is what the charges is that they come in for. And if that was part of that, then we would see that there were warrants that would come, that they would, we would put them on hold for those types of detainers.
So, so you would have prior notice if there was a warrant?
We would get that generally, yes. But we have not received any
Okay.
that I'm aware of, and I've reported that out.
So the absence of, of notification to you indicates
Yeah.
that there was no, no warrant involved.
Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned the, you notify ICE once the criteria, the inmate's criteria for release for release has been met. Can you please explain what that means?
So basically, our process is, is when we, when we get a notice from ICE, we notify the incarcerated person whether we're going to comply with the request or not, okay? If we don't comply, then we will just notice the inmate that we're not going to comply, that we received a request, but we're not going to comply. If we received a request that we do, that falls within those charges and that we do comply with, we will notice them at that time, that they, that they qualify, and that we will notice them. So upon their release, when the inmate is getting, or the incarcerated person is getting released, we call ICE and we give them basic, just let them know that they're getting released, they get a drive time to come up, and if they don't, we do not hold them past that line, they get released at that time.
So it's, so it's just a drive time notification from, what, San Francisco office?
Generally, yes, yes, right there. So it's roughly about, we've got about almost two hours, and then after that, if they don't come, they don't, a lot of the times when our staff do call, they'll get a notice, ICE agents say, we're not going to pick up, just release them. We've had, we've had various things that we've received, somebody was too acute for them, they didn't want to take that individual. So they kind of pick and choose what, once they pick up, I don't know what their criteria is, but not everybody, and then sometimes we just can't get a hold of them, so we're just making no, attempted to contact ICE, no answer.
Thank you. Of the seven that were picked up, do we track which qualify for the prior felony or past misdemeanor versus current charges? Because there are two categories that we, two qualifying categories that we have, past felony and misdemeanor versus current charges. And I, if we do not track that, I do think it would be incredibly helpful for us to understand that, that information, just because I think it goes to recidivism, it goes to understanding, if there is some sort of, I can't believe that there might be, but if there is some reasoning as to who is picked up or not, I think it would be helpful to understand what the qualifying category is that triggers the pickup.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the, the next one, on the, the, I, at risk of already knowing the answer, since we do not ask for immigration status, do we receive any information about immigration status from ICE when those, those requests for holds come through?
We, we don't ask any of that information, okay? The only time that we know is when ICE sends in the request that, that they would like that individual. We do not ask any of those types of questions. So we don't know one way or another until ICE sends us a report.
I, I do think, and I do not know, so I will ask, I'll lob this over to Ms. Bratton, I think it would be very informative to, for us to know whether those that are requested by ICE have permanent residency status, or whether they have some protected temporary or amnesty status. Again, mostly just for information for us to be able to know how these efforts are being directed, certainly understanding that, you know, the individuals have incredibly egregious crimes. But I think that having that information really helps us to pacify the concerns of the community when we're able to put together these incredible egregious crimes with the status of individuals to be able to, to provide some assurances in, in terms of, of what is happening within our, our correctional facility. And then the next one is, we, we're in a unique place, Napa County, the only county of the 58 that operates its own correctional facility.
Correct.
So I, I think it would be very helpful, and it certainly doesn't need to come back as, as a referral item, but maybe just a communication to the board, if there are some stats, and maybe the sheriff can, can assist in this, if there are some stats of similar situated population, and what those trends look like, obviously from the news, it tells us that there's, you know, we're informed that there is an uptick in this type of activity. But at the same time, it certainly doesn't seem like the number of pickups is increasing, it's the number of requests that have increased. And so it's not a disproportional amount, and I think that that information would be very helpful for us to have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Ramos, Supervisor Alessio?
Thank you, that just triggered another question I wanted to write down, so I wouldn't forget. Thank you very much for this presentation. I'm just going to ask in the future if we can get a printed packet, because it just helps us to keep the information and to reflect back on your slides, just so, in the future, please. On that, you know, on, and this might be a question for our county sheriff, Oscar Ortiz, is the uptick from seven last year versus what was three the year prior, and now it's seven at that half-year point, is that because crime is up? Or is, is this really identifying that there is just more ICE interaction?
I think probably a little bit of both, but, and just federal resources. And remind you, this is a 2024 report, so this is pre any policy shift.
Correct.
So we went from three in 2023, according to Assistant Director, to seven in 2024, and this was the prior administration and the federal government. So clearly, we're seeing an uptick if we're already at seven now, but there's still a limitation on federal resources. So I can share with you to Supervisor's point, but other sheriff's office, it's, the, the small fraction of pickups is kind of universal. As you can see from the 58 requests, seven pickups in Napa County. So, you know, as a prorated or rap, you know, adjusting for population of other counties, everybody's kind of seeing the same thing, a slight uptick, but still a lot of non-pickups. And then I would also, to Supervisor Ramos's point about asking about, you know, current, are they permanent resident or amnesty, or where they're at, I would just share that that would, and that would, and that's fine if NCDC wants to do that, but we specifically ask our deputies not to ask questions about federal law at all.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't be able to track that info.
I appreciate that.
We don't ask them any of that either.
Okay, great. I think, so what I'm hearing, Sheriff Ortiz, is that it's a little bit of both, that crime, DUIs, all these that are listed that might trigger a flag in ICE interaction is, is, has increased, as the, those being detained by ICE has also increased. There's some consistency there.
Well, I, I don't want to represent AJ's presentation, but I believe you said 158?
158 requests we received.
I, I will share with the board.
And how's that compared to previous years, as we saw the three and three, do you know?
And in 2023, we received 84 requests. Out of the 84 requests, 21 qualified.
Okay, so we're doubling, so we doubled the requests, doubling the, so that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the trend and, and what is, are these outliers, is there's kind of consistent with what's happening in the world right now, local, locally?
Again, these are 2024 numbers, but I will share that everybody that gets arrested, and I'm just sharing this from the perspective of sheriffs across the state, everybody that gets arrested gets fingerprinted, and that information of the fingerprints goes to California DOJ and United States DOJ. So the access of who got arrested is readily available to state and federal partners. And then they have their criteria, whatever they do, I don't know, to check those bookings and say, oh, we need to send a request, an ICE request, or detainer, or whatever they want to call it, to that, that particular jail.
Thank you. And that leads into what I want to say, is that I know local law enforcement, your department, you, and NAPPD, and other law enforcement, our district attorney, you've had outreach, community outreach in terms of the responsibility of local law enforcement, and how it doesn't, it's not, that, that there is not the questions of, of status, of immigration status, and, because I think the concern, and all the, let me first have you kind of share what the work you've done in the past, and maybe continue to do, along with the other local, local law enforcement agencies.
Yeah, well, beyond the federal, or the state, I'm sorry, beyond the state law prohibitions against those kind of activities, the reality is, local law enforcement doesn't have, unless they're cross-deputized, which is actually prohibited in California, local law enforcement has no jurisdiction, authorities, or powers of detention or arrest in the area of these federal laws. So that's common knowledge for local law enforcement, local law enforcement leaders, but not for the community.
Correct.
Right? The community is used to a national police department, in whatever country they came from. So we've done dozens and dozens of town halls and meetings and church groups, just educating the community with staying out of the politics, and just educating the community that their local law enforcement has no authorities, jurisdictional powers to, to enforce federal immigration law, and that's, that's first and foremost why, you know, we don't ask, we don't care, it's not, it's not part of our job. And then beyond that, there's also a state law that's prohibitive of that, so.
I appreciate that, and I think what's so important about that is that victims of violent crimes, domestic violence, sexual abuse, we want to make sure that they're comfortable coming forward, and that they're not afraid to report. So, you know, I know there's, you know, they get booked, they get booked, but we really want, you know, we really want folks who are victims of violent crimes or other forms of, you know, abuse, whatever, to continue to move forward and work with our law enforcement, trust our law enforcement.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio, Supervisor Gallagher?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on something that Supervisor Ramos asked for, and that was a way of being able to figure out what the residency status is of people who are taken into custody by ICE. I understand that no one's asking for the information when people come into the system, I mean, no one's asking, and that's great, that's, you know, we want services and everything to be provided without, you know, having to ascertain someone's immigration status. But it would really be interesting if we could have a mechanism for understanding what this residency status is of someone who is taken into custody by ICE. I think it's an interesting data point, and maybe it is just a voluntary, you know, you're, you're releasing somebody and you offer to, you know, to take that information voluntarily, that we're just, you know, wanting to know for our own information, you know, what their immigration status is. I mean, people may not want to answer, but others may want to say, hey, I'm a, you know, I'm here on refugee status, I'm here as a lawful permanent resident. I think it's really important data for us if we can have it. Of course, you know, people can give it voluntarily or not, but it might be interesting for us to have that, so. That's it.
Chair, if I may? Yes, please Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, I, I guess I want to be very cautious of us asking, even if it's on a voluntary basis, so it to, I don't, I don't think that the public sees the three badges attached to this report as separate, and I wouldn't want anyone from a, from a correctional client standpoint to then believe or fear that the sheriff's office might have it, that it might inform a stop at a later point. I, I think for, when I was asking the question, I think more so related to the information that ICE provides us, whether that data point is included, because then it's, we're not asking for it, and it would, it would, again, just be for informational purposes of understanding if this is targeted to a specific residency status. That, that was more, I would be very, I wouldn't be supportive of us at any point asking, even at a voluntary basis, what someone's residency status is through any of our offices that are required to comply with the TRUTH Act.
Chair, if I may, and perhaps this is, this might be helpful for, for this topic, it seems like maybe Supervisor Ramos and others were trying to find some rhyme or reason of who's the seven, why these seven, why not these 29, is probably what we're looking for, because it was 29 not picked up, seven that were. And I would, I'll share with the board that my information, and this is just talking to other sheriffs, and even talking to federal partners, it's more of a resource-specific problems, like AJ's team calls, they have the resource to send somebody from San Francisco to pick up the incarcerated person, or Director Alarcon's team calls, and they don't have the resources. So it's really more of a resource restriction as opposed to picking and choosing. There could be medical issues or something, that we don't want to deal with that, that incarcerated person's medical problems, and we're not going to pick them up. There's other outliers, but I think it's a lot to do with resources, maybe that's helpful for, for the board.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff Ortiz. I see no further discussion from the board on this, on this item, and this was a community forum and informational item. So, so thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron, for the presentation, and Ms. Soroge. I heard, in the future, make this a timed item, possibly in the evening for better community access to the information. I heard possibly interest in comparing to similar populations at other facilities in the state of California. I heard requesting a printed packet for our future, for, for the board for future, future updates, and requesting possibly information on immigration status from ICE, but, no? No, okay. No, yeah, from, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Data points.
Data points.
Not requesting information, data points.
Data points, okay. Did I miss anything, or is there any other clarification needed going forward? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the transparency that you're bringing to this process for the community. Okay, our next item, 9E, is a public hearing to consider the planning commission's recommendation from July 16, 2025, to find the proposed general plan and zoning code update implements, to find that general plan and zoning code update implements the programs and policies of the Airport Land Use Commission for adopting a resolution to amend the agricultural preservation and land use element and community character element of the Napa County General Plan and adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 18.80. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and welcome a staff report. Mr. Parker, good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Michael Parker with Planning, Building and Environmental Services, and with me is Michaela Mahone with County Council. So today, we have a public hearing for the county of Napa's general plan and zoning code updates to become consistent with the countywide 2024 Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Today's ask is that the board consider three things. One, that the proposed general plan amendment implements policies that were previously evaluated and are within the scope of the negative declaration prepared for the ALUCP. The second is an ask that this board consider a resolution amending the agricultural preservation and land use element and community character element of the Napa County General Plan. And lastly, that you consider an ordinance amending Napa County Code, Chapter 18.80, the AC Airport Compatibility Combination District. So a little bit of background for the board, on December 4, 2024, after a number of public hearings, the ALUC formally adopted and updated the ALUCP, or the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, for both the Angwin and Napa Airport. This is important because after adoption of an ALUCP, or after one is revised, state law requires local jurisdictions amend their general plan, or their specific plan, or their zoning ordinances within 180 calendar days. And once that general plan and zoning code is revised to be, and deemed consistent, only certain items would be required to go before the ALUC for consistency review. So to meet the consistency test with the ALUCP, a general plan or the update must do two things. One, it must specifically address compatibility planning issues, either directly or indirectly through reference to a zoning ordinance or other policy document, and it must avoid direct conflicts with compatibility planning criteria. So there's a couple of things that, that are changes that are being made for consistency with the 2024 ALUCP, and that includes updating the county's general plan to refer to the 2024 ALUCP. 2024 ALUCP, as well as updating two airport maps that are referenced within the general plan. And lastly, it amends Chapter 18.80 of the zoning code. These items were attached to your staff report. The first is Exhibit A, and the other is the red line ordinance. So as part of the 2024 ALUCP, there was an environmental analysis done. It was a negative declaration, and staff, county staff, and with planning as well as county council worked with the ALUC staff, and in reviewing their negative declaration that was prepared for the ALUCP, which was also attached to your staff report, we believe that there is no new mitigation measures and no new environmental effects that would occur due to this general plan update. Some background on the process. On May 20, 2025, staff did the appropriate tribal noticing to both the Native American Heritage Commission, as well as the California Native American Tribes, opening up the process for tribal consultation. No tribal consultation was requested. On July 16, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and in a 5-0 vote, they recommended the board find the proposed amendment, updates, implement the programs and policies of the ALUCP, and is within the scope of the adopted negative declaration. So no new environmental effects were identified, and no new mitigations are necessary. They also recommended the board adopt the resolution amending the general plan, as well as the ordinance amending Chapter 18.8. After the Planning Commission reviewed the updates, it was referred over to the ALUC for consistency review, which was held on August 6, 2025. The Airport Land Use Commission conducted a compatibility review and consistency determination for the proposed updates, and in a 6-0 vote, the ALUC found that the proposed updates to the Napa County General Plan and zoning code are in fact consistent with their 2024 So today's request, it's a little lengthy, but the requested action is that this board, one, find the proposed general plan and zoning code update, implements the programs and policies of the ALUCP, is within the scope of the activities and impacts identified and analyzed in the ALUCP's negative declaration adopted on December 4, 2024, and that no new environmental effects have been found, and no new mitigation is necessary. Secondly, today's request is that the board adopt a resolution amending the agricultural preservation and land use element and community character element of the Napa County General Plan to achieve consistency with the ALUCP adopted by the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission on December 4, 2024. And lastly, the request is you adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 18.80, Sections 18.80.030, 18.80.040, 18.80.050, 18.80.060, 18.80070, 18.80090, 18.80.100, 18.80.110, of Title 18 of the Napa County Code to achieve consistency with the ALUCP adopted on December 4, 2024. That concludes staff's presentation. We are here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Director, Assistant Director Parker, for this overview. Is there any public comment on this item right now? No one in the room? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the board for questions. Are there any questions about updates to the Airport Land Use Commission's recommendations for zoning near the airport? Okay, I see no questions or comments from the board. I would at this time ask for a motion to approve the requested actions.
I will go ahead and make a motion, but because we have a resolution and an ordinance combined, I'll go ahead and take them separately. And the first motion, that we find the proposed general plan and zoning code update to implement programs and policies identified in the ALUCP's negative declaration that was adopted on December 4, with no new environmental effects having been found and no new mitigation necessary, and adopt the partner resolution amending the agricultural preserve and land use element and community charter element of the Napa County General Plan to achieve consistency, and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 18.80, 18.80.030, 18.80.040, 18.80.050, .060, .070, .090, .100, and .110 of the zoning code, Napa County zoning code, to achieve consistency with the ALUCP.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Supervisor Gallagher, or, I'm sorry, motion by Supervisor.
I did the.
Yes, you did the work. Motion by Supervisor Gallagher. Well said. Second.
Ramos.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I am thinking, let's see, yeah, I am thinking, I am thinking comfort break. It is 10:26, let's resume at 10:30.
How about 10:30?
10:35? Okay, 10:35.[1006.75]
Madam Chair, we're ready when you are.
Thank you. All right. We're going to, we're returning from break here. We're going to go ahead and continue this meeting with Item 10A, Administrative Items. This item is adopting a resolution to amend Planning Commission bylaws to make them more consistent with Board bylaws. And we'll receive a presentation from Director Burdon and Assistant Director Parker.
Good morning, Chair. Michael Parker with Planning, Building and Environmental Services. Today, we're here asking the Board to adopt a resolution amending the Planning Commission's bylaws. The Commission's bylaws provide the rules and procedures for the conduct of the Commission's meetings and its business. The last substantive update of the Planning Commission's bylaws occurred in 2008, and so an overhaul was much needed. On February 28th, 2025, and again on March 7th, 2025, staffed noticed the Interested Parties list soliciting public comment on the bylaws and announcing the Commission would consider amendments to their bylaws at the scheduled April 2nd, 2025 meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted, had a unanimous vote of 5-0, voting to amend their bylaws with the proposed redline changes and forwarded that, those recommendations to the Board. In summary, the proposed changes include updating the outdated name of the department and the Commission, updating timelines for applicant presentations, updating public testimony protocol, updating deadlines for the submittal of materials to be considered by the Commission, as well as other edits that align with the Board of Supervisors' policies for conducting business, which overall will create better consistency between the Commission's meeting and the structure of the Board. Staff along with the Commission believe the proposed changes will lead to a more efficient and transparent hearing process. In your, attached to your staff report are the proposed redline versions. And in the, the margin of that document are comments left by staff for the Board to see which policies of the Board's bylaws were the Commission is aligning theirs with. So that concludes staff's presentation. Today's request is that the Board accept the proposed revisions, solicit public comment, and then discussion, a motion, and a second to adopt a resolution amending the Planning Commission's bylaws. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Yes.
Chair, man free.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. I just had a random thought there that, sorry. That back in 2015, there was a huge uprising of what I'll call neighborhood, neighborhood voices that came together at the high school. Vision 2050 came out of that and other, other. I remember at the time that it's in the, it's a regulation or an order that you meet every few years with the Planning Commission. You're kind of discussing this tangentially, I think. Wouldn't it be nice if you could get back to that again? A joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Napa County and the Planning Commission of Napa County. It's a very valuable thing for the community and we, and you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Okay, I don't see any other public comment. Are there any Board questions on this item? I see Supervisor Alessio and then Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. And I do believe we have a scheduled joint meeting with our Planning Commission. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's scheduled for September 3rd or 9th.
Okay, so that's in the works. Excellent. I thought that, I think that's really productive also. A couple thoughts and comments here. On Rule Number Two, Matters Pending Before the Commission, talks about items submitted by individual commissioners for specific listing under the agenda heading of Commissioner comments shall be submitted to the Clerk of the Commission in writing no later. And it's changed from Tuesday, 5:00 PM Tuesday, to Monday at noon. And I'm wondering what that purpose is and when the Planning Commission actually receives their packets and can provide something back. I want to make sure they have enough time.
Yes, so that change was made to align when the request for documentations from the public is due. So we ask also that anything that's being submitted that needs to be included and printed for distribution is Monday at noon.
Okay.
Anything that's submitted after will, will be included and attached after, after the agenda. And to answer your question, your other question, the agenda is published two Fridays before the meeting, which, which is a change we made since I've come on in response to the Planning Commission. Just needing more time, the packets are getting longer and longer.
Exactly.
And so by publishing two Fridays before, that gives the Commission one full weekend. You know, many of them have full-time jobs. And so this enables them one full weekend to review the packet and then a second weekend to, to conduct site visits. So although we're not legally required to do that two weeks prior, that's the protocol we, we do our best to meet.
You're kind of reading my mind here. So I'm wondering, is this something for the bylaws? I want to ensure that our, our Plan Commission has that type of time. And thank you so much for that change in terms of, of the, kind of the informal procedure. But I do think that's really critical to the work that they do, that they do have the time, especially since we're moving this back, you know, a day and a half instead of Tuesday at 5:00. I totally get staff time and needing preparation because the next day would be your Planning Commission meeting. So I, I understand that. But can we add that to the bylaws? That we would, that the Plan Commission would receive their reports two Fridays before their meeting?
So I would, I wouldn't recommend doing that because we adhere to the Brown Act and the same process that the Board follows. By legally, we have need to publish 72 hours in advance. And then for a special meeting, it's 24 hours in advance. So those rules are outlaw, outlaid out in another document. And, you know, just knowing that things can come up, that while we do our best to do two weeks in advance, there have been times where we need the flexibility to do it the Monday, you know, the following Monday. And staff communicates with both the Chair and the Commission on, on publication. So I know staff would appreciate the flexibility. But by state law, we, we have a minimum of 72 hours, but strive for it prior to that.
Okay. And again, I don't know if that would be, you know, appropriate to put that the staff will attempt to provide, you know, documents, reports and presentations by what you're trying to, this new standard that you're trying to be consistent with. I understand you need the flexibility, I totally get that. But I also want to make sure that they have flexibility and there's time on the other end for them. So I'm looking for a compromise there. And maybe it's not formalized, but maybe it's, it's mentioned. Because, Mr. Parker, you're not always going to be here. Mr. Burdon, you're not always going to be here. This hasn't been updated since 2008. So I'm just trying to create some assurance for the future Planning Commission and, and Board of Supervisors. That's my thought. Doesn't have to be engraved in stone, but just that the sentiment is there, that so they do have enough time. That's all. The on Rule Three, it talks about, it says change quote "citizen" comment to public comment. And this gets kind of back into what we were talking about earlier. Who's to determine who's a citizen, who's not a citizen, who can make a comment? Do they need to be a quote-unquote "citizen"? Are they a resident or is it just public comment? On, on three, I, I think it's just public comment. And I think we can remove the word "citizen." Does that make sense?
So that was a carryover from the old bylaws and I'm happy to strike citizens and change it to public comments.
I think it's consistent with everything else. I appreciate that. Oh, gosh, now that I'm looking at my notes. On Rule Three, I have down T because I'm looking at my notes. It says why the removal of quote "future agenda items." I'm not even sure why I put that down now. Do you understand, do you understand my own notes?
So future agenda items, T was struck and combined with letter R. So Director, Directors does any report including Board actions, zoning administrator action, and future agenda items.
Okay, so Plan Commissioners can still make a request for future agenda items. It's just under R.
Yeah, so the future agenda items is a discussion of upcoming items for the next Commission meeting. Sort of as a heads up to the Commission and sort of get them prepped for what's going to be before them in advance of the agenda being published.
Are the Commissioners allowed to request future agenda items? Because it looks like based on this, they're no longer have the opportunity to make that request.
So the Commissioner, Commissioners can request items to come before them under S, Commissioner comments or committee reports. But the Commission operates slightly differently than the Board where, in my experience, we've never had an item, a Commissioner request that an item come up. They have requested under, under Commissioner comments. You know, they would like information on X, Y, or Z, or they would like a workshop on whatever the item is. So that would fall under Commissioner comments, but we can include.
I, I would prefer personally, and not the rest of my colleagues feel, but I would rather just leave that in there. So the option is available to the Planning Commission. City Planning Commissioners do make future requests. So I'm kind of basing it on my, my experience unless our, you know, CEO or, you know, Council disagrees with that. But I want to be able to leave that there and not strict that from an option for the Planning Commission. That's just my personal opinion. On six, it talks about the election of Chair and Vice Chair. I'd really like this to mirror what we do here, that it's based on rotational versus this random election based on the Planning Commission. Because right now, as it's stated by the recommended bylaws, it's kind of like somebody can make a suggestion. It could be the same Chair several years. Again, I think the rotation based on how we proceed of who's going to be the Chair in the Planning Commission makes a lot of sense. And again, I know the City Planning Commission does the same. So I feel like that's, let's just keep, let's just mirror what we do here on the Board of Supervisors. So everybody has an opportunity if they're still on the Planning Commission past their, their, you know, two to four years. On Rule Nine, okay, I'm good with that one. Let's see, the roll call vote. The roll call vote may be called and voting upon a motion of the Commission. At the discretion of the Chair, any member present who does not vote on an audible voice shall be recorded as voting aye. And I think that's probably standard practice, but I don't think it's best practice. I think it's very important for the Chair of the Planning Commission to have clear understanding of the Commissioner's vote, whether it's aye, nay, or they're going to abstain. And I think it's important for the Chair and also for the Clerk of the Planning Commission to have a real clear understanding of what everybody, what their vote is. And not just assume it's going to automatically be an aye if they don't hear them. So if we can include that. So how I have it written here is where, where, okay, it says, I believe it's best practice for the Chair and, and Clerk of the Planning Commission to hear the vote clearly with aye, nay, or abstain. And if there's doubt, ask for the vote again or a roll call vote.
Can I just make a quick comment? I think this is all in, within a roll call vote instructions, Rule Nine, Rule Nine, correct? This is all about a roll call vote specifically. So I think what it means is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you are doing a roll call vote and you say, you know, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Jones says nothing, then that's recorded as an aye, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not about not hearing. It's about specifically to a roll call vote, which means everyone must give an audible, you know, so not as a group. If the person stays silent, then it's recorded as an aye. That's how I read that. So I just leave that to you guys to explain if that's what it is.
Correct. And I guess what I'm saying is that I don't think that's best practice. I think that the Commissioner, they need a moment and a pause because different Chairs run and the timing can be very quick for certain Commissioners. And a certain, and a Commissioner may need a moment to consider their position, whether they're going to say nay or not, and not just be ran over with, okay, you're, you're an aye automatically.
I don't think that's what's happened though. I think there are specific instances where people will stay silent. It doesn't happen very often, but I, I think that's what they're referring to.
So I believe nine is, is to attendance. So at the beginning of the meet, like at the beginning of your meeting, the Clerk called who was here for voting, that goes to Rule 21.
Okay.
So the Rule Nine isn't for voting on a.
I see. It's only voting that you're present? A roll call vote may be called and voting upon any motion of the Commission. So this is, this is any motion of the Commission.
So it's, sorry, it's to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, so taking up an item, they'll do roll call again. So for instance, if halfway through a meeting, a Commissioner needed to leave and they take up a new item, they would call for the roll call again. This isn't a roll call in terms of how they're going to vote yes, no, or abstain from voting. That's how I read Rule Nine.
Okay, I'm reading it differently. I guess maybe I'm just, this is new for me. So I'm reading it differently, that this is regarding a call for the motion and the vote of the Commission. Nope.
If, if I may, and I could help clarify here, what Rule Nine, Rule 21 is voting, which incorporates the voice votes that you are expressing opinions as to. Rule Nine is what allows the Chair, at the Chair's discretion, to require a roll call vote.
Got it.
So if it's a controversial item and there is a separation of voting, the Chair always has the prerogative to call the roll call vote.
Thank you.
That's what Rule Nine is.
Okay.
Rule 21 is the voice votes. But remember, in your drawer, we have Robert's Rules of Order that are very specific, but that's Rule 21. This is just the prerogative of the Chair. So the first set of rules are related to the Chair's conduct.
Thank you. And we, and in this, in the bylaws, we, it's adopted that the Robert, Robert Rules of Order are going to be a part of the procedure in these new bylaws. So I saw that, that change too. Thank you for that clarification because I just want to make sure the Commissioners had an opportunity to really state their position. Let's see, in terms of, okay, I'm fine with that. Rule 16 kind of confused me a little bit. And I, I want to thank Eve Khan, who also wrote public comment and asking clarification on a couple of these. This was one of those, she asked clarification. But it has to do with, shall be required to give testimony or evidence under oath at the discretion of the Chair of Commission. I've never seen this happen. So I'm just, how does, can you help me understand when and how that happens?
Yeah, so this doesn't, isn't a common occurrence. There is, and I would have to get back to the Board. There is one type of hearing that County Council, our County Council had said it would be recommended we leave this in. Because in the type, those types of hearings, we wouldn't swear people in under oath. The name of that hearing escapes me, so I can follow up with the Board at a break.
I see. Okay, I just, I've never seen that. So I was like, oh, that's, that's interesting and I, I didn't know how that applied. That's all I have. Thank you for listening to my thoughts on this.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Alessio, Supervisor Gallagher, and then Supervisor Ramos.
Trying to remember what I was going to ask. Actually, I was going over Eve Khan's comments and I was just, you know, wanted to make sure all of those had gotten addressed. I think we do say that people have a three, generally a three-minute time to speak.
Correct.
In alignment with the Board. Actually, she asked about Rule 17, letters, petitions, documentary evidence presented prior or at the time of the public hearing, but you do want things in advance of. And so is that in any way conflicting with Rule Two regarding the late submission?
No, so the, we will take documents all the way up until the time of the hearing. We just may not be able to.
Put them in the packet.
Yeah, so what happens is items that are received during the Commission meeting, all of that gets processed by our Clerk and uploaded to the agenda after the fact as part of the administrative record.
Right, okay. Thanks for the clarification on that one.
And then if I could just go, quickly go back to Supervisor Alessio's question about Rule 16. It's for revocation hearings, which are, we typically would require somebody to be sworn in because we're dealing with vested property rights.
What kind of hearing is that called?
Revocation hearings.
Oh, a new word. Thank you.
It's, it's a very unusual, but County Council recommended we leave it in. So in the event that we did have a revocation hearing, we would be able to go down that path.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also mention that I understand the Brown Act rules around timings of agenda and whatnot. And I actually want to say I'm incredibly impressed that you got the Planning Commission agenda out two weeks in advance. We used to get it one week in advance, which I thought was fine. But the fact that we've been providing it two weeks in advance or anything over a week in advance is amazing. I don't even know how you're doing that. So kudos to you for, for being able to do it. But understanding that we need to stay within the parameters of the Brown Act in terms of when those documents need to be released. I, I think it's fine to, whether we say requests for future agenda items or not. You know, Planning Commission's a little different. Public hearings are brought to the Planning Commission. There's not a lot of Planning Commission requests for things other than things like workshops or just added information. So, you know, maybe, I don't know how you want to, you know, put it. But I don't think we have requests for future agenda items on our agenda. It's just understood that it's now under Board Reports and Comments. Is that correct? Do we even put it on the agenda? So it's kind of just like you can make whatever comment you want. And within that, you can request something to come back. Generally, they're not making like referrals the way that the Board is. They're just asking for information or some kind of, you know, workshop or something that would be interesting for the Planning Commission to know and understand. And they, or they'd like to bring that to the public. So it's a little bit. So it's a little bit different, but I think it's, I think being as consistent as we can with our bylaws was kind of the point of updating these. And so the more that we can do that, the better. And I do like, just kind of removing anything that goes to any kind of status in terms of immigration, residents, any of that, that we just say public. Thank you for that update. Maybe we weren't thinking that clearly back in 2008, but we know better now, so we'll, we'll do better. But thanks to both of you for, for finally getting this to us. I remember we were trying to do it five years ago, so, or however long that was. So thanks for bringing it and good presentation.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Gallagher, Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. And just to add to the discussion regarding the posting of agendas, when we are constrained by the Brown Act, we shouldn't further constrain ourselves. So I, I think the expectation, certainly, I think you've received it clearly, that the expectation through the CEO's office is that those agendas will come out two weeks in advance for the planning commission to, to be, have sufficient time to prepare. But I do not, I do not see the benefit of us legislating that time within our, our bylaws with really no enforcement mechanism. Likewise, I, I want to be very cautious and share with my colleagues, we have tried, painfully tried to obtain consistency to the extent possible between our various boards and commissions and the bylaws so that we don't have different expectations of different departments and the commissions and boards that they support. So I think to that end, keeping it consistent is, is great. When it comes to future agenda items, I, I will say that I, I think that the consolidation of that item is appropriate. And I would say that because the jurisdiction of the planning commission is solely advisory with general plan implementation. They, they cannot initiate anything other than related to their advisory role and general plan implementation. So I don't think we should be inviting beyond that. Anything that is beyond that actually wouldn't be appropriate for the planning commission. If there are concerns, that would need to go through the, the director. And certainly, a planning commissioner, if there are concerns, can, can come to us. But anything that is within that advisory role is really limited in scope. So I do think that it's, it's, it's appropriate to, to bring those, those two items together. When it comes to the chair and rule six. So there is some interesting unwritten history here, and that is that when a supervisor served as chair, their planning commissioner would likewise serve as chair. And that happened until 2022, when I was skipped over and my planning commissioner was chair. And so there was actually a unwritten rule as to what that, that would do. And, and, and really that, that consistency, we lost it. We also lost it in that one planning commission chair served a two-year term. And let's just say we lost our way between 2022 and 2023 in terms of order and what we were to do. So I, I want to be, I, I want to share that so that we understand the value that it brought. At the same time, I do think that we need to provide the planning commission sufficient leniency to be able to determine who is the right chair at the right time. So while, because planning commissioners, while tied to our elected terms, can certainly be appointed midterm if someone were to resign or be dismissed from service, we don't want to, we don't want to prescribe a situation where it might be a seasoned supervisor that steps into chair, has a planning commission resignation, and mid-year has to appoint a planning commissioner, and that person is presumptively chair by virtue of the bylaws. So I, I think that we want to be cautious. I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to suggest tracking the district appointments, the, the districts that are serving as chair to the Board of Supervisors, or at least to opine that the planning commission should take that into consideration. It is incredibly helpful, I will say, when you've got an item that you know is coming from the planning commission over to the board, and how to just minimize, to, to, to make sure that, that we are not, we're not stepping on the planning commission's toes, and that we're certainly allowing them the opportunity to serve in their advisory capacity. So that type of coordination, I think, is helpful from a logistical standpoint. But I wouldn't do anything more than to just suggest they look at who the chair is and choose wisely.
May I? So I guess I just want to make sure it's an, there's an objective process, that this doesn't become, because you never know, the dynamics can get weird on any board or any commission, as we've seen in the past. And I don't want, I don't want there to be an opportunity for people, for this to be a popularity or whatever reason, that isn't an objective process, which is why I like how we do this at the Board of Supervisors, though I don't know if that's actually a policy or if that's just a courtesy. But that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to find an objective approach, so it doesn't become convoluted.
So what I will say to that, and I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll take this one first. If that is your concern, we don't even do it objectively. So our own policy, while it has a rotation, has some strong language for deviation of it, which is how we ran into this problem where we are no longer pursuing a numerical order. We committed, I think, two years ago to get back to, but that's why you are in two and you don't follow one, right? So I, if, if that is the concern, then it needs to be prescribed. I think if we prescribe, we are not, we're not treating our planning commission with the authority and, and the appropriate responsibility for them to, to, to make choices for leadership. And I completely understand the skipover. Trust me, if there's someone here who understands it, it's me. However, it is what it is, right? I mean, we can, we can certainly communicate to the planning commission, those are the cards you're dealt, and take them, and be adult about it. But at the end of the day, if we don't like the choices that the planning commission makes, then those are choices here, not within the, the bylaws themselves. And so I, I, I want us to be very, very cautious. Also, there may in fact be a dynamics reason why someone is, is overlooked. And we're not sitting behind that dais. I, I think that, I, I do trust that our staff will inform us if there is a concern with the rotation of leadership. I, I, when that has happened and the need for bylaws amendments, here we are. So I just want to be really, really cautious that we don't dictate absolutely everything of leadership in bylaws, because we do need to trust. Otherwise, I do believe we start meddling in that advisory capacity of the planning commission, and they're there to help us. They're there to, in ideal world, take on those issues, implement the general plan, and that's something that I would be off our plate. And so we, we need to provide enough autonomy so that there is independence there with the planning commission, so it doesn't look like it's simply a directed vote from this board.
Yeah, I, again, I'm just going to reiterate, I'm really comfortable with my recommendation. I understand I don't have the support, it sounds like, with the majority of the board. But I, I think it's having an objective process, that it's just, it's rotational. It's not based on experience. It's not based on favoritism or whatever else that could potentially happen on a, on any committee or commission. I want to try to take that, take that away from the decision process. That's just my own, that's my own comfort level. And again, you know, we have a great commission, but I'm looking into the future. I just want to have that safety net. I don't want it to be, it's not that I'm trying to take the authority away from them. I just think a process and a procedure on that, on the objective level would be, would be helpful. That's just my personal opinion on that. Thank you.
If I can, just to offer up my perspective. I used to sit in Michael's chair and was the secretary for the planning commission for some time. The selection of the chair occurs every January, along with the selection of appointees or making appointments to various committees. So it's kind of a shared experience. In my experience, there has been, I think, somewhat of reluctance on the part of some planning commissioners to want to be the chair. I think, like, like you mentioned, and I totally agree, we have a great commission, and we have had one for some time. There's a support, there's oftentimes we find a support for given individuals, maybe more seasoned and maybe more comfortable in that position. But nonetheless, there is a discussion. The existing process has worked well. I have seen no issues with it. There's a great conversation that happens when people are selecting, nominating folks to serve as the chair and vice chair. So it works well. I totally get your points and don't necessarily disagree with it, but just wanted to offer that up. And that is working really well as it sits now.
I appreciate that, thank you.
If I could just quickly add, this was, not this exact situation was discussed with council, but sort of the planning commission bylaws as a whole. And I think for all intents and purposes, the previous bylaws served the planning commission well since 2008. I think the proposed changes will serve the commission even better. But just say for, as an example, if one day we found ourselves with an unruly planning commission that needed to be reined in, it's under the purview of this board. You, in your individual role as a supervisor, appoints the, each planning commissioner. And at any time, if a future agenda item could be requested for staff to bring back the bylaws for consideration or discussion, and then this board could direct the commission to update their, their bylaws as the committee, committees and commissions are under the purview of the board. So just an extra safety net.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Gallagher, further comments?
Just wanted to, as a former planning commissioner, say generally it is a rotation. And I think what you've got in the bylaws reflects that and also gives them that autonomy. It, it is important for people who've sat at the dais for a while to move into those chair positions because they, they have the experience of the meeting. And I wouldn't want to see it necessarily be a situation where somebody brand new has to be the chair if they would prefer that, you know, someone that was there before them is, becomes the chair. So I think we kind of try to give that leniency. We try to, we even do it here if, if necessary. I think a brand new supervisor, you know, usually there's the, you know, hey, you're up, but do you want to wait here? So, you know, that does happen. So I think giving them the autonomy to make those adjustments if necessary is, is what's fair. And, you know, generally speaking, they do rotate, and I think it works fine. So just wanted to give that perspective.
Okay, Supervisor Alessio?
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues here upon the dais. I really appreciate the discussion and staff's also response and discussion. So as I went through and I looked at all my, my thoughts and suggestions, I'm going to retract all of them except for the public comment one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, really good discussion, really productive, I think. I hope this was helpful for staff. And so, so what I'm hearing is we're, we're just making one suggested edit to the public comment section. And I think that should be perfectly clear at this point. So are, is, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so a motion-
The one amendment?
So moved to adopt a resolution to amend the planning commission bylaws with one amendment.
Correct, and that's on rule three, changing from citizen to public comment.
Thank you. A second? Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Alessio, second by Ramos. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and our next item is 10B. This is the transmittal, approving the transmittal of the proposed response to the 2024-25 grand jury report titled Behind the Curtain: Napa County Use Permit Process to the presiding judge as prescribed by section 933 of the Penal Code. And again, we have staff report, so please go ahead.
I'm going to provide the two-second introduction, since it's a grand jury recommendation. According to the Penal Code 933, we have 90 days to submit a response to the presiding judge. So we need to submit it. In order to stay in compliance with that 90-day time period, we do need to approve that today, at today's board meeting, because in about a week and a half or so, that 90 days expires.
Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead.
Good morning. Board, Michael Parker with Planning, Building and Environmental Services. I'm joined with Director Bordona to discuss the grand jury report behind the current Napa County's use permit process. So for those who may be viewing or who are new, I'll do just a quick overview. The grand jury did a seven, seven-month investigation of the planning department and the planning commission. It noted multiple reasons for that grand jury investigation. They noted recent lawsuits challenging Napa County's winery use permit process. They also wanted to evaluate efficiency, transparency, the structure and public accessibility of the use permit process. And on May 29th, 2025, a final report was issued after a seven-month investigation. The focus areas of the grand jury report covered everything from fees and cost recovery to winery permits and the winery database, to compliance and inspections, as well as the management structure of PBS. That resulted in five findings and five recommendations, which were laid out in the report itself. I won't go into depth reading each one, but they're included here in the next two slides. And on, the staff responses to the grand jury report were agendized and discussed at the board's July 29th, 2025 meeting. And after a lengthy discussion, as well as input from the board, there was a consensus for the report to be redlined with some requested changes by the board. Those requests included some redlines to the response on the winery database, which we included. And we highlighted that the winery database is not intended as a primary data source. In the response, we elaborated that there is a disclaimer on that database, as well, we expanded upon the alternatives that any member of the public can use in terms of gathering information, be it a status determination or a public record search. In terms of compliance, we elaborated on the history of code compliance within the county. There's a discussion in there of APAC, a discussion regarding the compliance in general, as well as the future agenda item that was requested by this board back in June for a future agenda item to come before this board on the winery code compliance program. There were some other minor updates that staff made, from general updates to language and phrasing, to elaborating on responses for better clarity, as well as the addition of web links. So for example, we elaborated on the initiatives PBS has taken over the past year and a half, 18 months or so, from covering things from standard operating procedures to electronic application submittal, items that we've done as a department to increase efficiency and really set expectations to hopefully improve the process. Specific to the winery database, I wanted to highlight this slide. We added the, within the grand jury report, the full disclaimer, which you can see on the right, the right, to the grand jury report, noting that the winery database is available to the public as open data, but not intend, that it's intended as an informational tool only. So that entire disclaimer was included in the grand jury report. We elaborated on status determinations, as well as did a thorough, more thorough explanation of the county's public record search, which is called Open Napa County, and as well as the PBS public record search. That's on the next slide. So I highlighted in the report how to navigate to a public record search. And for those in the audience, I have a screenshot showing how to navigate the county website. We further highlighted that approval documents are the primary sources, not the winery database. And we expanded on staff's perspective that sometimes it can be used as a way, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison that winery proposals of today are subject to more regulations than winery proposals of the previous decade. And in your attachment, attached to the staff report is both a clean version, as well as a redline version of the, of the staff report, of the grand jury report. Speaking to code compliance, we elaborated on AIPAC September 2025 recommendation of the Planning Commission. We had included a discussion of the previous board that in December of 2015 and January of 2016, there were board discussions around compliance, and that the previous board decided not to codify compliance in an ordinance, but rather in the code compliance policies and procedure manual. There's, we elaborated on how the previous board implemented the 2018 implementation of the winery code compliance program and highlighted in the response to one of the recommendations that this board requested a future agenda item on June 24th, 2025, to discuss code compliance in general, with a focus review on the winery code compliance program. And that future agenda item is tentatively set for September 23rd, 2025. As I noted, the redline version is attached to your staff report, and it, it notes all the changes we've incorporated since our last discussion here at the Board. And so today's requested action is for the Board to approve the transmittal of the proposed responses to the 2024-2025 Grand Jury Final Report to the Presiding Judge as prescribed by Section 933 of the Penal Code. And staff is here to answer any questions the Board may have as to the redlines that are proposed.
Thank you so much for that helpful presentation. Is there any public comment on this item? I don't see any public comment on this item. Are there any board questions for, oh, oh, Mr. Hackett, welcome?
I'm just not fast enough for you, Chair Manfree. Thank you for the opportunity to talk very, and I'll stick to the, I sent you all a note yesterday, it was a little bit mean, but I apologize for that. I'm a kinder, gentler guy today. I, I think overall that what I, my, my tone is about, the fact that I think that there are some inconsistencies in application of the law here in Napa County. And I, I, it doesn't have anything to do with any individual. I think the process at the Planning Division needs to be updated. And that is what, in general, the grand jury is speaking of. You have to be open to some change. Where we witness it in land use is oftentimes things come to the Planning Commission that are well-done, except incomplete. And this is not the opportunity to talk about specifics of that. Ironically, I was shocked when this grand jury report came out and discussed the same process that I'm, that our, our group is worried about, because I didn't talk to the grand jury. I can say I did not. I didn't plant the seeds of somebody either inside or very well-informed was, was asked to speak to the grand jury. And the grand jury, Gary Margadant just called, I'll just, this is an add-in, he says, please ask the county to thank the grand jury. So I think that's probably worthwhile. You don't need to defend and deflect everything, just be open to some new ideas. And that maybe never, everything isn't just perfect. I'll go along with one of their, one of their recommendations and then sit down, and that is the mandatory pre-application meeting, not just in land use, but if you can sit down and with a, with one of the more experienced planners and go through the process of what they're going to, going to be applying for, and you pick out those, of course, I'm, I'm concerned mainly about environmental issues, most, most especially related to water. But if they have a creek or a stream, if they have some waterway on them, they're close to a lake, if they're withdrawing so much, so much water, it needs to be analyzed, and the sooner the applicant knows that, the better it will be. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Okay, yeah. Welcome, come on down.
Hello, Michelle Benvenido, Winger, Southern Napa County. I just wanted to make a quick comment. And last time you guys discussed this, there was an assertion that the wine industry prevented annual winery reporting, reporting from coming forward. But I just wanted to clarify, the Board of Supervisors did actually pass a resolution in December of 2018 directing staff to implement such a program. But then we had wildfires and we had COVID, and there was a lot of reasons why that got delayed. Wasn't because the industry stepped in and fought it. But at the same time, as you're all aware, the industry is facing real economic hardships right now. So it does seem to be the wrong time to ask for additional reporting to an already burdened industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benvenido. Any other public comments today on this item? I don't, I don't see any. Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the Board for any questions or comments. Oh, I see Supervisor Gallagher and then Alessio.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Parker and Mr. Bordona, for the update. I think you did a great job in taking everything that we provided last time and incorporating that. It was actually a lot of work, a lot of redlines. So thank you for, for doing that meticulous work. I'm sure it took a good chunk of time. I think it's just important to reiterate that this document is be, I think it works for what it was intended to do, and I think we should keep along that track. I don't think that we should be trying to make this official, or I think you used the word, it's not a warranty. Is that what you said? In the, in the presentation? I don't believe that's what it's for. I think that we get into trouble if we try to make this some kind of an official document. There's a lot of other work that would have to take place to make it official. That's not what it was for. The use permits themselves are the official documents. And I would say it, it's important to have those disclaimers that you have on the site and make sure those are very much upfront, that people who are looking to see what their actual use permit says, actual wineries, like, this is not the place for you. Like, this is not the place to be checking and reviewing your use permit. You need to do that on your own with your attorney and come in for a status update if that's, if that's what you determine you need. But that this is a public document that is for your use, for the public's use and to gather information. I think it's also important to note that there aren't necessarily all of these inaccuracies in the document. That isn't actually been proven that there are inaccuracies. There may be things here and there that haven't been completely updated, but it's not like it's, you know, riddled with inaccuracies. I know that people sometimes get confused when they are looking at a pre-WDO winery. It might have a, you know, a dash where there may be a number for another winery, but that may be because those wineries are, they didn't have to have permits for certain activities. So there, there is no number there for whatever, a number of visitors or something like that. So, you know, you can't compare, it isn't an apples-to-apples comparison. You've got your pre-WDO and your post-WDO, et cetera. And people living under different, different types of rules and different conditions. So I think it's incumbent upon people using it to understand what they're looking at, look at the keys, ask the staff if you have questions, if you don't understand what you're, you're looking at for some reason. I think, you know, call and, and ask for clarification. But it does what it's, it was intended to do, and I think you did a great job updating the report back to the grand jury. And thank you for your work. Oh, one other thing. If, if people, I mean, if, if you decide as a, you know, I think as a planning staff that you want to look into how the database is being used any further, that probably the better place to do that is during the baseline data report process, that, you know, that is maybe a place where you could incorporate, you know, other elements that, in terms of this report or this database. So take that for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Alessio?
Thank you. I first want to, I want to thank staff. You guys have worked really hard on this. You've taken our thoughts and our comments and our suggestions and all that dialogue and really listened and applied to it. And in this, in this response, as you amended and edited this response, I do want to say that my recollection, and with all due respect to Mr. Hackett, this board was very appreciative and verbally shared their, their gratitude to the grand jury for the report, for their time and effort. I think everybody on here thanked the grand jury for their service to our community. And in addition, I, you know, I want to also, which is noted in this amended response, I just really like this. It says, regarding, regarding the PBS Department, it says, "The Department remains committed to working collaboratively with the Board of Supervisors and stakeholders to ensure any future compliance initiatives are fiscally responsible, transparent, and aligned with the county's broader land use policies and goals. To that end, on June 24th, 2025, the current Board of Supervisors requested a future agenda item addressing several topics related to PBS. This includes a general discussion of code compliance, a focused review on the winery code compliance program, and consideration of a potential sunset date for that program. The discussion is tentatively scheduled for the Board meeting on September 23rd, where the Board will receive an update, engage in et cetera, et cetera." And, you know, I know that the Department has, you know, we talk about a lot, the checklist, that you're updating the checklist. What I'm trying to say is with gratitude for public comment, and we need, always want to hear from our constituents and, and the residents of this community, but I also want to share, I see and witness the hard work of our staff. And I respect the hard work of the grand jury. So, and not to mention the stakeholders in our community and the wine industry as we try to navigate this very, very challenging time with so many different forces that are working against us and our, and our county. On that note, I'm going to go a little off the rail for a second, but with the lack of support and the viability of our wine industry, our tourism, our hospitality, that's going to impact sales tax, TOT tax. It could even impact our property tax. Those are funds that are given, how we, that's how we serve our community are through those funds. So it's to the betterment of all that we continue to work on, yes, always doing better. And I personally see our staff always doing better, just as I see the grand jury and our public saying, we need to continue to do better. We're all on the same page here. That is common ground. I want everybody to feel confident, because I, I see that, I witness it, and thank all parties for that. And the, I really appreciate staff also in this report, you know, talking about the, you know, what, what the on-base software program is. I mean, that was something that I had said, what is on-base? I can't find it on the website. And so you took my comments and you incorporated that in your report to explain what that is. And you're also helping people see how to navigate our website, which I believe is always continuously improving, and I think there's another improvement coming. In terms of how they can access public records, I, I still think that the winery database is something that we uniquely offer. When I looked at neighboring counties, they basically have a PowerPoint presentation on their latest kind of data sets versus what we offer. And it is hard to keep it up to date. I think that we want to strive to keep it up to date. In many ways, it can be self-reported and updated by our industry, by those folks who are listed on the winery, on the database. So I just want to express that and, and continue support of that public access to that with the caveat that we have a very strong disclaimer, which I, I believe we already have at the top. Let's see here, what else do I have? In, in terms of the public comment, in terms of the, the auditing and what was presented and talked about, and this is on page six of the report, it talks, gives us a little history lesson of what the Board had decided in 2016. And it's my understanding that there used to be a, kind of a random audit program of the wineries, and it wasn't very effective. And what was recommended back in 2016 was that there'd be a, a self-certification process that would then be presented by the, by those that have the winery use permit to verify that they are within the bounds of what they're permitted to, to do. And then that was sidelined by the fires, pandemic and everything else that was already mentioned here. So I thought, you know, I think that is of interest. I agree that timing is everything, or right now, you know, the, the wine industry has a lot they're trying to manage. They're also trying to look at how they can do better for the public in terms of transparency and the process and procedures, and providing some feedback and input to us, in addition to the other general public comment of any kind of concern. So I appreciate everybody's effort on, on both sides in, in that area. But timing is very important, and how we move forward is critically important. Let's see. In terms of the, the first item, I'm going to say the first recommendation regarding the mandatory pre-evaluation or mandatory, is it pre-review? I think this, it's important, I mean, I, I hope that we strongly encourage, I think it's to the betterment of the public or somebody who's not done this before, to have a pre-review meeting with our PBS Department. I know we have staff that are at the windows and they're there to help explain and navigate and go through that process. We do have a fee for that because we recently approved a 100% fee recovery. I don't know if it's, we want to make that mandatory, because I don't know that everybody would want that. So I'd want there to be flexibility there. But if there was some way that we could, whether it be on our website or otherwise, two things, say we strongly recommend new applicants who have not been through this process, really reach out to staff for your own benefit. We are here to serve the public and help you through this process. You know, and again, it just depends on the complexity, right? The other idea, and I don't know, and, and we may already have this, do we have like a, a tutorial program, like a video that shows people how to go through the process? You know, when you need to fix something at your home and you're like, I don't know how to do that, so you'll look it up on YouTube? Is there? Is there, do we have any tutorials or video tutorials for people to help them?
So we have a tutorial on the PBS website. It's a PDF tutorial on how to do electronic submission or how to actually schedule a pre-app.
So we do have those?
Yes, it's in a PDF on how to, it's like a PDF download.
Oh, the PDF, but not like a video?
No, it's a screenshot.
Okay.
So click here and then, you know, there's screenshots that go along, like every step of the process. And for example, in scheduling a pre-app. We have through a number, we've done a number of stakeholder outreach workshops. We've posted those presentations to the website as well as we have a number of flow charts that cover the process. The grand jury actually attached some of those to their report. And then we also have two planners who are assigned to our permit center every day for walk-ins. And they'll sit with customers for 15 or 20 minutes and field whatever random questions are thrown at them. And then we also have planners who monitor the general planning inbox. So we receive daily emails from constituents asking about, you know, anything from, you know, winery issues to fence setbacks requirements. So we do have a number of available resources on a daily basis as well as tools that we've uploaded to our sites. We have a number of guidance documents that we've also posted to our website. But if anybody has, you know, we're always open to suggestions or new ideas.
Yeah, I've looked at the flow chart and I've looked at the process. It wasn't very long before, it was kind of over my head. It was like, wow. My husband probably would understand as a general contractor, that's not, you know, an issue for him. But maybe in the future, again, I wouldn't put this as a response or formal response, but maybe in the future we can do more video tutorials. That might be easier for people to understand in terms of just general public. But that's all I have. I just want, again, I want to thank the grand jury. I want to thank public comment and especially our staff for the good work here. Appreciate it.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. I don't see any other comments from the board. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the proposed response to the 2024... Oh, I should probably do my comments, sorry. Just reading along here. But I did want to comment on this item, I really do, because the grand jury did spur a thoughtful discussion about the work that goes on at Planning Building Environmental Services at the county. And this is a really high-profile department for us, very public-facing. Many of the projects that come through, many of the things that PBEs handles are completely non-controversial, some of them are, those get a lot of attention. And I do see that this is a department committed to an ongoing process of improvement. That was completely evident to me throughout the process of having this discussion, having the follow-up meetings, and even being here today. If you look at the full response to the grand jury, it's a mix of implementing recommendations, declining to implement recommendations, and further considering recommendations. And it's very thoughtful, it's very complete. I really appreciate that what's coming back to us included the APAC history. I think that was a great addition to help explain why things are the way they are today. And I also really appreciated the incredibly robust discussion of the winery database, which is a wonderful community resource and of course, not an authoritative first primary document, but a secondary document that summarizes things from our records. And I think understanding it that way hopefully will be helpful for the community. So I'm personally comfortable with returning the current draft of the response to the grand jury. And yeah, those are my comments. Thank you very much for your presentation today and everyone for participating in this process. So I am looking for a motion to approve the proposed response to the 2024-25 grand jury report.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Alessio, second by Ramos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So at this time, that was our last public agenda item. We'll be moving into closed session and reconvening after that. We'll take up items 11A and 11B in closed session. And I would like to ask for any public comment on items 11A and/or 11B at this time. Welcome, whenever you're ready.
Good morning Supervisors. We're here just a couple of weeks ago when we approved the contractor to begin repairing the Ridge Crest Road. Myself, my neighbor, Mr. Harris, who also already lost his home to the county's illegal and neglected storm drain, tried to tell you the real story, not the version from Public Works, Mr. Letterer, who has every reason to gaslight the situation because it is his department's negligence that created this disaster. Three homeowners, an HOA, and now county taxpayers are all exposed. Right after the landslide, while storm water was still gushing down the hillside, Mr. Letterer first claimed the storm drains owe the private. When he was challenged, then he changed his story. Suddenly, it's the fault of an old encroachment permit, supposedly shifting all liability to a private owner with a hold harmless clause. When you start digging through the documents, it's just strange that only a few pages of that permit exist, no plans, no inspections, just three pages. And no inspections. It also, it actually, in that document, one of the terms of that document was that when the storm drain was constructed, the outlet was to be returned to its original location. Letterer tried to claim that that storm drain pipe had been moved by this encroachment permit, and it had been moved from the left side of the property to the right side of the property. That wasn't the case. There is a reason why that drawing is missing. But in that text, it says that that water is to be sent back to its original location, which means that storm drain was there all along. There wasn't an easement for it. So let's just be clear about one thing. This encroachment permit that the county seems to put all their eggs on, it's no immunity whatsoever for the county. It's never recorded. Under California law, if it isn't recorded, it does not bind the successor in interest. Mr. Harris never sought, never agreed to it, and he cannot be bound by it. It was temporary. By its own terms, it expired one year after the final inspection. It cannot create perpetual rights. It granted no easement, no permanent drainage rights. It only authorized minor work in the right of way, nothing that conveys authority to flood downstream neighbors forever. The county's duty is not delegative. Under Belair versus Riverside County and Ariola versus Monterey, government agency cannot discharge storm water.
If you could conclude your comments, please.
Okay. In short, you have four claims now, legal claims, that are going to be the taxpayer's burden now because we couldn't get the county's legal counsel to make a determination. Suddenly, now that the claims are filed...
Okay, that's well over... Yeah, you're well over your time. And I didn't catch your name at the, you didn't state your name at the beginning, so if you'd please...
Thomas Falcon. I live in your district. The district where you've never attended a single meeting. Thank you for coming to the picnic, though.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Falcon.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for the closed session. Items will be in recess until 1:30.
Thank you for putting your time on it. That's okay.
Okay, so we are returning from closed session. That was item 11. And I would ask at this time for county council to report out on our closed session.
Thank you. The board met in closed session today on item 11A, conference with labor negotiators. The board gave direction to its labor negotiator. The board also met in closed session today on item 11B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation regarding four claims. The board gave direction to counsel, no further report out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. We will now adjourn to the next Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m.